And then we're going to have the pledge by Supervisor Cavanaugh.
Good morning. Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator and Ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, including Kevin Jeffrey, Mike, Stephen and Jeff, that guided by your Spirit they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution and unwavering in duty, that under them our Pinell County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
And please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to three republics which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll call the meeting to order. And if it goes that long, we will probably take a recess at 12:30. First up, we have a call to the public. You have three minutes to speak. You'll get a warning light, and then you need to wrap it up when you see the red light. These folks have already filled out forms, but when they're through, if there's anybody else that wants to speak, we'll hear from you as well. First up, I have Jim Bannon.
Good morning, gentlemen, and I hope someday to say good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Bannon from Budget Video for Biz, better known in Twitter spaces as QR Done Right and across the entire Internet as ROItrack.com. I live at 15976 East Highway US 60 in Gold Canyon. Congratulations to Mike Goodman, who resumes his rightful position as Chairman. It was a position he held eight years ago when I first moved here from Chicagoland. I reminded him in a meeting last week with Haley Studebaker of our initial meeting at Combs High School and challenged him, as I do now every member of this distinguished board, to look back at all these years of leadership, great judgment and demonstrated commitment to the taxpayers and voters of this wonderful county, now numbering over half a million people. I wish I could say I professionally and personally accomplished anywhere close to those amazing feats, but I cannot. To each of you and your excellent staffs, Sheriff Mark Lamb, Dana Lewis, Kent Volmer and hundreds more I have not met, hats off to you. One big attaboy and congratulations to each and every one of you. Now, as for Central Arizona College, it's a totally different story. Their executives are demonstrating the very worst of Pinell County through their failure to communicate. They are critically harming every taxpayer in Pinell County. My two testimonies in front of the Board of Governors is public record, available on YouTube for all to see. My third testimony, if necessary, in January will not only involve the media, but also the potential filing of legal action. Oh, guests, members of this board, please look into this before it's too late. I will also be seeking your proven open minds to guide and lead my member of my Board of Directors, Wally Piper, who is with me today, to help create the opportunity for Pinell County to dramatically enhance your employee benefit package and reduce your FICA tax by approximately $12 million over the next 10 years. Thank you. God bless. I have a $20,000 gift for each of you for Christmas. Thank you. It's Lee Cockrell, Executive Vice President of Disney.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Another week, another illustration of the importance of dedication to truth, transparency and accountability. Putrid words spoken recently by the campaigning leader of the Republican Party, pimping for votes of the racists among us with his venomous words that the immigrants coming to the U.S., quote, "are poisoning the blood of our country," unquote. Echoing German Nazi words, supported by his Italian and Japanese allies, that led to the killing of 6 million Jews and 5 million non-Jews, all in my lifetime. Words in a political campaign do lead to action. Trump words scraping the depths of hypocrisy by spewing his anti-immigrant venom during Christianity's most joyful Christmas season, the religious season which celebrates the desert, border-crossing migrant family of Joseph and Mary, seeking refuge for the prophetic birth of the child Jesus. Vicious and unhinged remarks by the criminally indicted former president as he seeks to escape accountability for his illegal attempts at stealing our election. And yet, we continue to witness Trump's dedicated but deluded supporters openly applauding his vile words, words of admiration for autocratic dictators who also seek the overthrow of our government. Finally, Mr. Chairman, more pious words for reflection by Pinell County's own anti-immigrant elected officials and their supporters. For I was hungry and you gave me food. I was thirsty and you gave me drink. I was a stranger and you welcomed me. Yes, let the discussion initiated by Sheriff Mark Lamb continue. Let's investigate. Who is destroying our country and our moral values? Merry Christmas to the members of the board and your constituents.
Thank you, Supervisors, for allowing me again to speak as a follow-up to last week or last month's meeting and a letter that I believe you all should have gotten. And I want to just read a part of it into the record, use some of my three minutes, and then just have a few comments on it. Water and water wars will be the single largest issue, not only challenging Pinell County, but every county in the great state of Arizona and throughout the United States. We have an opportunity to establish a leadership role in this matter by creating policies that reflect everybody's property rights. To begin the process of developing common sense policies, an ad hoc committee or less formal group could be formed. I'm just suggesting maybe somebody from academe, somebody from business, somebody from the legal department, as well as a representative from the Supervisors. Then we'd have government, oh, and Building Department, too, certainly needs to be included in it. Academe industrial professionals with an expertise in groundwater management issues would all be represented. And there are a few of us with that kind of experience here in Pinell County. It's inevitable that this will have to be dealt with. Any county can do it on their own terms, or they can be forced. If you like the way the federal government runs a utility, vis-à-vis skip, then maybe that would be welcomed for the federal government to also recommend or regulate our water resources. I've had no less than 20 people come up to me since the last time, about a month ago, expressing concern about this, both homeowners that have wells and both homeowners that want to, and some one that had run out of water already. We're not asking you to even dip your toes in the water. Just pull up a Chase Lounge, order your favorite beverage and watch what this committee can do. Please give it lightning speed, which I know in politics and government is not the same as perhaps in business, but hopefully January or February, this can be on your agenda and the committee can actually be go-to-work before the end of Q1. Thank you for your time and consideration of this most important issue.
Good morning, Members of the Board, Chairman Sertie. For the record, my name is Jenny Vitale. I reside in Chandler, Arizona, and I'm a civil engineer who specializes in septic permits. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again today. As was brought to the Board's attention during last week's special session, there are some problems with the fee schedule that was approved with the APP program. I'm here today to ask the Board on Item 14 to approve a motion that would allow the Board to suspend that fee approval that was approved on November 1st and give your staff a chance to go back and revisit the fee schedule, do their due diligence, do their homework, and bring forth to you a fee schedule that captures all the services that you are delegated to provide with your delegation agreement in ADEQ. Supervisor Miller had an idea that perhaps we should be looking at surcharges for distance based on how far the county has to travel for permits. You might want to take a look at separating out residential versus commercial. Commercial applications, even if they are for a similar type system, do take staff a longer time to review and approve and inspect. And then the 4.23 program needs to be revisited because it does need to be part and parceled out a lot differently. You can't expect somebody who's buying a hangar down in the Eloy Airport and putting in a septic tank and a seepage pit to pay the same amount as somebody with an RV park that has a nitrogen loading problem that's going to have to be have a very complicated system that denitrifies, has sewers, lift stations, et cetera. And so right now, the fee schedule doesn't capture that correctly. Last week at the meeting, it was brought before the Board's attention that there was an error in the posting in the paper, that there were errors in the language of the fee schedule that you approved that could result in double charges. It could also result in maximum charges of $3,700 for conventional septic permits. Staff did admit to the Board last week that they did not do their proper due diligence and actually did not run the numbers to justify that, in fact, the fees that they asked you to approve were, in fact, justifiable per state statute. You want a comprehensive fee schedule, an a la carte menu, similar to a restaurant, right, that allows people to be burdened according to the service that they're requesting. You don't want a fee schedule that heavily loads conventional septic permits to take the burden of funding that department. By suspending the fees today and reverting to the 2001 fees, you'll give your staff a chance to go back and actually interact with staff and get an understanding of how that department functions, the time that it takes to review these, the time that it takes to inspect them, et cetera, and put forth before you a robust, comprehensive fee schedule that is not only justifiable, but can then easily be updated every three to five years to meet the needs of the county. They can also bring forth a fee schedule that allows you to have a 10% to 15% rainy day fund, such that if permits fluctuate, you don't have to lay somebody off if you have an equipment expense. That's what the other counties do, and so I think upper management can be enlightened with a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for listening. My name is Jamie Griffin. I am a septic installation contractor for the last 25 years. I'm also an Arizona Registered Sanitarian. I'm also here to have a comment about Number 14, the APP fee increase for the septic systems. And I have, we, our company has issued for two reasons. Number one, first of all, the septic, for the general septic, just regular septic systems, the fee has been increased from $296 to $1,200. And we feel like that's excessive. We were told by the county, by the Environmental Health Department, that it was going to be $500. That's why we didn't dispute. We felt like that was fair. And that was an error, I guess. And so now we have a little bit of problem because we feel like that's just too much for the common Pinell County citizen. We feel like there should have been a study to find out how much exactly these permits should cost. That study was not done. And I just want to remind you that there's a lot of citizens that are hurting financially, and that's a lot of money for a typical septic system. The last system, the last permit that I turned in was for, and with his permission, I'm telling this, Mr. Diaz, who lives in Maricopa City. He's over 70 years old. He came to our office in September. He had been, his septic system failed, and he has been going across the street to use the restroom and to take showers. And he has been saving his money so he can afford a septic system. We gave him a price, the best price we could give him, told him the permit was $296. And so he's been saving his money so he can afford to put a new septic system in. And just last week, we got his permit, and I had to tell him, Mr. Diaz, the permit fee has changed from $296 to $1,200. And that's tough because the contractors are the ones that pay for it. We're the ones that tell them. I mean, we pay the county, and so we're the ones that tell the citizens, this is how much it's got to be. And so we have to tell them why. And I just would like justification for these fees, and I ask the, I ask you to please take a look at it. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good morning. Rich Vidal, Councilmember, City of Maricopa. Supervisor Sertie, Jeff McClure and other Supervisors. I'm here to thank Mr. Cavanaugh for arranging a meeting with the City of Maricopa about the 347. I'd like to also thank Leo and the staff for attending. It was a very good meeting. As many people know, as you all know, the 347 is not just for the residents of the City of Maricopa. It brings people in from Chandler, Gilbert, Tempe, all over the valley to come through Maricopa, to go to Yuma, to go to Mexico, to go to San Diego. This road is a very dangerous road. We are looking for help for the funding, and I just hope that in the new year that we're going to be able to see if there's something we can do to help us out. But I do want to thank for the meeting because, again, without getting us together and discussing these problems that we have on the 347, we all know the funding is about $315 million, and we look forward to working with Pinell County in the future to get this funding or get some funding to help us out. So, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Mike McCord, Pinell County Treasurer. When we were here last, we had presented to you all our new OpEx machine, and we were asked by Vice Chairman McClure for some information as far as online payments and compared to what we get via mail and through escrow. So I just wanted to come back and share that with you guys in the community. So I'm going to go all the way back so you have a little bit of historic data. So in 2018, our online payments were 18% of what we took in. In 2019, that increased to 20%. In 2020, it went up to 26%. In 2021, it was 30%. And as of 2022, the '23 tax season is not wrapped up yet, but as of 2022, 34% were online payments or via credit card transactions in our office. So, you know, roughly 60% to 70% of what we're doing is via hand-touching mail. So I just wanted to come back and share that all with you. And then on another side note that I forgot to mention when I was here before, we had demonstrated this for the Assessors' Office, and Douglas Wolfe and his staff are also now going to start using this to be able to do address changes that come in on tax bills. So you're going to now have two departments using one machine that makes the efficiency of both of our departments where we were having to hand due processing to make it more efficient for both of our offices. So I just wanted to present that to you guys this morning. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then I will end the call to the public. Now, we're going to go to a bunch of certificates for 20 and 25 years, and when everybody's done, we'll come down and take one picture, correct, Leo?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We have three employees that we have the honor to celebrate today. The first one we have is Eloise Marska, and she's been with us for 25 years as Deputy Clerk in the Clerk of the Court's Office. I believe that Ms. Marska may be here. Hello, hi, Eloise. Did you want to come up, or did anybody from the Clerk's Office also want to come up with you? I don't know. Oh, there she is. Our Clerk of the Superior Court is here with us, Rebecca Padilla.
Okay to say something?
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Eloise has given her entire 25 years of service to the Clerk of the Superior Court's Office, and I've had the honor of working every one of those years with you. But I want to thank you for all of your hard work, your dedication to our office, to our court. You have a generous heart. You've, you've done so much for our office, for our staff. She's one of our most seasoned tenured clerks, so what you've given to your department, your staff, your, the employees, is just, is completely invaluable. And I wanted to tell you just how much we appreciate everything you do each day, the love that you have for your work and for the customers, the thousands of customers that you have helped in Pinell County. But I want to just tell you, I'm so proud of you today, and I thank you for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Next, we have from Pinell County Sheriff's Office, Joel Benucci. He's been with us for 25 years as a Deputy Sheriff.
I was looking, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, thank you, Sheriff Lamb. I was looking around, I don't see either Detective Benucci or Veronica, so I'd love to just say a few words about both of them, and hopefully we'll get a chance to recognize them on another time. Joel is actually getting ready to retire. He's been with the Sheriff's Office for 25 years, at least for the time I've been the sheriff. He's been in our, our major crimes, which is going to be homicide or any type of major crime. We're going to lose him. It's going to be a real hit to us and the experience that our agency has, losing a detective that has put in so much time and effort into this agency. And so we are, we are very grateful for the service he's given. We wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors, retired. He loves to fish. He's an avid fisherman, so I'm guessing it'll probably involve some fishing. But we are very grateful for him, and I hope that if you get a chance, maybe shoot him an email and just thank him. I know he would appreciate that, just for the great service that he's given to this county, handling the worst crimes that we have to deal with in this administration and in this profession. So. And then the other one is Veronica. Veronica has had to put up with all of us for the last 20 years. She has been one of our administrative assistants. Her brother is also one of our now lieutenants, so they have, their, their family not only serves her, but she's been a great servant to the Sheriff's Office and has been serving most of that time, at least that I've been the sheriff, in the Investigations Division of the Sheriff's Office. And so she has to handle all that paperwork, make sure that everything's in on time, and so we're grateful for the service that she's given as well. I don't think she is retiring, at least I hope not. We could use another 20 out of her, but we're grateful for their work and just wanted to come up and publicly thank them for their service and their dedication to the Sheriff's Office. And thank you for recognizing them as well.
Thank you, Sheriff. We'll make sure that they get their gifts as well. But yeah, that's, that's it for today. If they, if you want to come down and take the photo.
Okay.
There we go. There we go. And, three, two, one, looks great, one more, big smile, three, two. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just first take a moment to thank you for being the chairman here this past year and for your skill and organization and for the value that you've brought here to the public process and the public engagement. We won't embarrass you, but we do have a certificate here with all the staff signatures for you.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
And next, I know that Dana Lewis, our recorder, is going to give an update, and I'm sure she has a lot of good information, but I do want to mention some things and about her as well in this process that she might not say herself. I was fortunate enough to be able to be part of the Certified Elections Officer Training, and it's nice when I can be in the audience like that because I can hear on the ground how people are feeling about what's going on and what they're thinking, good, bad or indifferent. And in this case, I can tell you that Dana stepped in for three other presentations of people that weren't able to make it or to make up some time, and so she took the whole morning. And if you all know, if you're in training all day, sometimes it can feel like a long time. And the audience for her and them not knowing really who I was, was that she was the best speaker of the whole presentation. They loved her. They wished she could keep going. And so her engagement and ability to connect with the trainees and give real-world examples and some humor in the process helped us out a lot. And I would want to mention, too, the progress that's being made around that. Every other year, this training is offered on the off-season, and we've had 44 of our employees go through this and are now Certified Elections Officers. So we are building our resilience and building our skill in this county to be the best prepared and deliver the best we can. The other thing I would note is that there is going to be a movement to see if we can get this training offered every year. The state understands that there's a shortage of this training. It is very good training, and they're going to see, I think legislatively, it has to occur for that change to happen. So we would be supportive of that as staff because the more training that we can all get and the more certifications, the better around this area. And then I would mention that there was also a tabletop exercise, but I think maybe Supervisor McClure and Recorder Lewis will probably talk to it and let us know what that was like. It was a statewide training, tabletop exercise on things like election security and what's happening these days and the challenges that we're all facing. And then lastly, I'd like to celebrate our Public Defender's Building that was moved into, that you all went to the ribbon cutting, but wanted to show the highlights of that and for the public if they didn't know. It was long overdue. The building that the Public Defender moved out, moved out of was built in 1956. And so they're, okay, not, not that long, not that long ago for human terms, I guess. But, but very good that they're there, very professional setting, and they're there in the justice complex where they should be with the rest of the system. So I think the Clerk of the Board has a video for us.
Welcome, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We are in the brand-new, beautiful Public Defense Building. It has so much natural light, beautiful meeting spaces, lounge area. It has a courtroom for practice and professional development, everything we could ask for.
There's the Public Defender's Office, which takes up most of the building. That's the largest department. Public Defense Services is very small, mostly tasked with administrative duties related to public defense. And then the Public Fiduciary's Office.
We are in the Pinell County Public Fiduciary's Office.
The Public Fiduciary's Office cares for vulnerable folks in the community that need assistance making decisions in their lives, advocate for services that they need or assist them with financial responsibilities, things like that. But that's all court-ordered, and they are ordered to provide that guardianship service to individuals in our community.
So being in this complex affords us the ability So, being in this complex affords us the ability to be close to the court when we are managing our guardianship, conservatorship, and personal representative cases. We have considerable number of hearings on a monthly basis, and it allows us the opportunity to be close to our work.
So, the location of this new building is quite advantageous to us. We're in the same justice court complex. So, our staff can walk to court. We are also right next door to the jail, and we can readily see our clients at the jail. Our clients can be instructed by any department in this complex where they can find us. Before, at our old building, it was sort of a maze for people to wander through floors to find us. So, I believe that where we're situated really better serves the citizens of this county and our clients, because we are readily accessible.
So, this is what we would call a mock courtroom, and it's something that's very unique to public defense in the state of Arizona. I think that we're the only ones who have this. And it's a place for lawyers to prepare their witnesses for testimony, or to prepare their clients for testimony, prepare their clients for what it might feel like to be in a courtroom. It's also a place for lawyers to practice their trial skills, and maybe get some feedback from other lawyers.
So, over the last two to three years, we've seen a very sincere push by the Board of Supervisors and the county administration to get Pinal County to progress into the future.
It really does show that the county supports public defense, and that the Board of Supervisors prioritizes the work that we do, and that the county has come together and decided that this is something important, and it's important to provide good services to our clients. We're just so very excited. And I'm personally very excited, because there's so many great people that work in this office, and the fact that they get to come here to this place now, instead of where we were going before. They feel supported. They feel well-regarded. People are stopping and really taking pride in this place. And certainly, we've seen the lawyers already using this courtroom, using the meeting space, and the technology that we've, you know, that we've been able to put in the building. So, I think it's changed things for everyone.
It is absolutely gorgeous.
Now, we are inviting everybody in.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all.
Okay. District reports. Let's start with Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not anything specific to my district, but January 17th, we will have a reception at CSA for the county supervisors to meet and mingle with the legislators from the state legislature will be there. So, if you can attend that, it's an opportunity to network with them on a more relaxed environment. So, that's January 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00. CSA headquarters. Thank you.
Mike Goodman.
I'm assuming food's going to be there, right, Supervisor Miller?
That's correct.
That's the way we get those legislators in our, to listen to us. For District Two, I just wanted to announce that we have a community cleanup event on January 12th through the 13th, from 7:00 a.m. up until 1:00 p.m. That means that the yard there off of Hunt Highway will have dumpsters and crew members that will help unload your vehicles and things of that nature, and put them into the trash bins, the big containers. We're also trying to organize, we are organizing various youth organizations, youth groups, and even adult organizations to clean up some of our highways, like Gansel Road. We're getting a lot of debris and things of that nature over. And then off Skyline, we've got Mary Gloria that we've honored in the past. Her organization is helping us to put together some, to some of the residents that are older in age, like myself, that could use some help cleaning up their yards. And so, we're having these type of, that's what we're going to be doing on the 12th and 13th. So, I'm inviting everybody in the audience here to come out and assist and help, and everybody in Santan Valley. So, call my office. You can also register online as part of that process. So, thank you.
Jeff McClure.
One more thing. Merry Christmas.
Okay. So, this last week has been interesting. I was at the Pinal County Historical Museum's Christmas Dinner at Harold Christ Windmill Winery. It was a great event. In the barn, packed. I think there must have been 100, I think it was like 180 people there. It's their biggest fundraiser of the year, and they did very well that night. A good dinner put on. I'm sorry, Oak Texas Roadhouse, I believe, was the caterer. And fun had by all. Silent auction, they made some money, and it was a great deal. The next day was Public Works Rodeo, and that's R-O-A-D-E-O. And they bring in people from Hila County, Yuma County, Morana, different cities, you know, Maricopa, our own guys here from Public Works. And they have a great demonstration of their skills, you know, backing dump trucks up, and running graders, and backhoes. And I know my admin last year rode a backhoe with a spoon on the bucket. I mean, this is like, how good can you handle your equipment? And had a spoon on the backhoe, and you go in a big pile of sand, pick up an egg, and swing it over, try to drop it in a plastic cup. She almost beat the guys. That was really scary for those guys. So, anyway, that was last year. But it was fun to watch all that, and we had a big award ceremony, and everybody gets prizes, and that was a lot of fun. The next two days after Friday, Saturday, I attended Secretary of State's Tabletop Expo on Elections. And this is the second one I've done. It's really interesting. We have officials from all over the state, and we're broken up into imaginary counties, and we go through the elections process. Dana, how many, when do we start, like May to November? Is that right? Yeah, it's like, it's like six months prior to the elections, you have this, you know, this time. And like, every three minutes is an hour. Or, you know, it's like, oh, my gosh. You know, and you have all these problems that come in, and all these things going. How do you handle it? Who do you hand this over to? What happens? What do you do? And you do Election Day the same way. In an hour, we did an entire 24-hour period. And all these problems come in, you know, phone calls coming in, news reports coming in. And a lot of emphasis was put on generative artificial intelligence, which is the big thing out there right now. You've all heard Chat GTP and all that, you know, or GPT. You know, what is that? It was interesting to learn some of the things. You had these, obviously, these imaginary TV interviews going on, and, you know, we're watching them. Come to find out, you know, a couple of them were generated. Looked like the Secretary of State. Wasn't him. The only way you could tell was if the lips didn't move. It's kind of like a Godzilla movie. You know, they didn't work quite right with the, with the words. And we found out a lot of things on that. There is one, Microsoft has a operation right now in their artificial intelligence, where they can take three seconds of your voice and come up with, come up with an entire story from you, you know, make it sound like you. And so, we had to, we had to decide if the phone call was real or Memorex. It was really interesting. And then, again, what do you do with that, you know, and how do we get that information out to people? And, you know, that this was fake news, not to use that phrase, but, but this was fake news, this is a fake phone call. This isn't real. This is real. And having to decide how to differentiate. So, it's very good exercise, and I'm sure Dana will talk more about that. And that was my last week.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we are still taking apps for someone who would like to serve on the Pinal County Merit Commission, which meets about once a year. It helps review cases for Pinal County in regards to human relations issues. We did have the meeting Mr. Vitello mentioned regarding 347, and the complications of that, because it's a state road, where funding can come from to expand that road. And so, that was a good meeting, and we're breaking it down into sections and bite-sized chunks, and see what can be funded at various times. And last Saturday, or a week ago, I'm sorry, last Saturday, three, four days ago, I had the privilege to, to represent Supervisor Miller at a key ceremony for a retired Marine Corps Gunnery Sergeant who received a new home that allows him to, it's a handicap accessible home, but allows him to be more free within his own home. And he served in Iraq. He was, he was injured by an IED, but, but even after that, continued to serve in the Marines after his, his leg was cut off, which is, which is quite unusual. And because of the, because of the things that he experienced over there, and the chemicals that he ingested, he's now experiencing some other problems. So, it was really fantastic to be able to go and see that veteran honored in that way.
Okay, I want to- Mr. Chairman, can I, I want to publicly thank Supervisor Kavanaugh for filling in for me. It was an interesting story. Again, thank you, Supervisor Kavanaugh, for filling in for me.
Okay. In my district, I want to thank Republic Services. My office has been working for over a year to get a community cleanup, because Apache Junction has a free dump week. Gold Canyon, since they're not in the city, can't use that. So, what's going to happen is on January 8th, there will be some big roll-offs at the community church, Gold Canyon Community Church, which used to be the grade school, from like 7 till 3. Please don't abuse it by bringing stuff from out of town and whatever. And of course, hazard materials can't go. But if you just have extra things that don't fit in your dumpster, that'll be a good, good way to get rid of them. And also, I have a video, too. We had a very important bridge opened on, it's a road that a lot of people don't know about. It used to be Highway 60, and it means so much to the community, especially when you talk about one way in, one way out. What if you need to go around? So, Natasha, do we have that queued up on Queen Valley Bridge?
One, two, three.
Currently standing on the newly finished Queen Creek Bridge at El Camino Vallejo Road.
It's the exciting culmination of a year and a half project. And we are now at the point where we are opening the bridge back up, and our town is very excited.
This is approximately a $1.7 million project with a million-dollar grant from federal highways. There's a project that involved ADOT, FNF Contracting, all the different facets of ADOT's consulting, the county, and the community of Queen Valley.
This bridge is part of a U-shaped roadway system to our town. Originally, it was the only way in and out of this town.
The way this one's built, it's really overbuilt. But I think 100 years from now, I don't think anybody's going to be salvaging any of this, because it doesn't have the charm that the old one had.
We did have to remove a 100-year-old bridge. So, knowing how important it was to the community and everyone around here, we did do our best to achieve a similar look by putting a small arch to this bridge. And we also salvaged some of the railing parts and gave it to the Queen Valley Historical Society and the Superstition Mountain Museum, so that they could take those pieces and put them for the public to see in the future.
We have not been able to get a fire truck across this. It just was not structurally safe. It impacted our response times terribly and put people at more danger than they needed to be.
All emergency vehicles, weight-wise, can now travel this road. There really is no weight limits to this road anymore. It does take a great partnering to make it a successful project, and I'm very proud of this project, and want to thank everybody that was involved.
It's all people have been talking about for the last six months. So, thank you for all of your hard work on our behalf.
Great teamwork. And they're actually going to be making some benches out of those rails up at the museum. So, when you're at their amphitheater, you'll be sitting on pieces of the old bridge, because all those things were hand-formed over 100 years ago. Okay, now, we have Scott Hamilton, who, from up Scottsdale Way, is going to have a presentation on how a community can preserve land for open space, conservation, no?
Number five.
Number five. Oh, yes. Hold on, Scott. So, yeah, last year, we gave our first Civic Engagement Award, and now we're doing one from each one of the districts. And these are folks that really, they have better things to do, but they volunteer their time and make a difference in the community. Some of them, it's a lifetime achievement, and some of them, it's from year to year. So, Natasha, do you want to read these, or how, this is the first, this is all new to us, so how are we going to do this?
Chairman, yes, I can read them, or the supervisors can just say a brief overview of their actual individual that will be receiving.
Yeah, let's go that way, then. District One. District One is Kevin Kavanaugh.
Forgive me. I just got to get to this place here. So, the Civic Engagement Award was started to recognize those who interact and influence government, but who are not paid to do so. To exercise free speech is necessary to resist tyranny. The opposing view should always be heard, no matter what side of the aisle you're on. And we recognized Roberto Revellis last year for being an example of the citizen contrarian that government needs to hear from. There are three kinds of arguments that influence government decisions: volume, frequency, and quality. Volume might include loud arguments, insistence on moving government in a position without perhaps logic attached to recognize the implications of that decision. Frequency might be someone who just keeps coming, sharing their point of view to those who may not want to hear it. And, and this person may know they're right, but just can't articulate why. And the third person, the third is perhaps the most effective, and that's the one who brings forth a quality argument. Today, I'd like to recognize Brenda Hiscox as the person in this latter category. When, when county management brought, brought forth an expert to tell us that solar panels have no detrimental impact on the environment, Brenda arranged to have a PhD in environmental science present arguments based on his own research and that of the federal government's own Environmental Protection Agency, who say that solar panels are toxic to the environment in their lifecycle. Brenda Hiscox has attended other governmental meetings, such as Coolidge, Arizona, and made her point known with reasoned arguments. Brenda quietly organized community members to show up and present their reasoned arguments. She is never the loudest in the room. She doesn't visit frequently, but influences government with the quality of her arguments. For this reason, today, I'm recognizing Brenda Hiscox, and like to present her with a certificate and the, a small gift.
District Two, Mike Goodman, who do you have?
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to, to recognize one of our citizens in the Santan Valley area. You know, this has been given a lot of thought and effort by our staff and by myself, as to somebody who has stepped up since they've actually moved here in the last couple or three years, and, and even prior to moving here, had a lot of effects in her community, and some of the efforts that she's done with the citizens in that area. She's actually on the water board in that water district, and so, she's taken some initiatives. She also serves on the Santan Valley Council, and has exemplified the ability to go out and listen to the constituents and people that she serves, and be able to come back and eloquently communicate that message to my office and to my staff. You know, it's, it's a rarity that we find individuals in our communities that actually spend the time and effort at- and effort at no cost to them, or no charge to them, and much of their time and effort, as well as their own resources, are utilized. And so I think, I think that's something that helps make our job even easier within what we do in our own districts. And so with that, I'd like to ask Lisa Horn to come up and join me, and we have a certificate for you and for the efforts and things that you've done. Thank you, Lisa.
Have a hug, though. That's my gift. You know, her family has been lifelong residents of Arizona, and so, several, yeah, seven generations.
Okay. District four, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually going to have Natasha read the somewhat of a proclamation, but I want to say a few words. My nominee for this award is a gentleman by the name of Jimmy Kerr, who sat in this seat for many years. And the Casa Grande Museum did an interview of his, and I would ask that maybe Natasha find the link that she found for me that talks about Jimmy Kerr being raised in Pinal County from childhood to today. And, you know, I'm a big person about history. If you want to know where you're going, you better know where you've been. And Jimmy Kerr has seen so many changes in this county, and he's been such a civic-minded leader in this, in this county, from the city council in Casa Grande to the Board of Supervisors for Pinal County. He was one of the charter members of CSA that I sit on now. He has been instrumental in a lot of the development that's taken place in this, in this county. Back when he was elected, well, I'll tell you, you don't run for these offices for the power. You run because you're going to be a servant. You're a servant to the people. And if this man was not, didn't fill that role, I don't know who did, because Jimmy, you did a fantastic job for many years.
Natasha, do you mind reading that?
Yes, Supervisor Miller. Pinal County Board of Supervisor Civic Engagement Award. Whereas, it is with great pleasure that the Pinal County Board of Supervisors acknowledges and honors Mr. Jimmy Kerr for his extraordinary service and invaluable, invaluable contributions to Pinal County. Whereas, Mr. Kerr, a longtime resident of Casa Grande since the early 1930s, has not only witnessed, but actively participated in the growth and the development of this community. Whereas, his dedication to Casa Grande is exemplified by the establishment of two successful businesses and the nurturing of a family within the community. Whereas, Mr. Kerr's legacy as a public servant is commendable. Having served as Casa Grande City Councilman, Casa Grande City Mayor twice, and Pinal County Board of Supervisors member, taking office on January 1st, 1977, and returning in 1993 for three consecutive four-year terms. Whereas, his unwavering commitment to public service led him to an impressive 20-year span in elected offices from 1985 to 2004, actively representing the interests of the city of Casa Grande in Pinal County with distinction. Whereas, in 2002, Arizona State Highway 238, known as Gila Ben Highway, was rightfully renamed Jimmy Kerr Boulevard in recognition of his impactful contributions. Whereas, through his steadfast, continued preservances and dedication, Mr. Kerr played an instrumental role in making a positive impact on the community, leaving an undoubtable mark on Casa Grande in Pinal County. Now, therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors take pride in presenting the Civic Engagement Award to Mr. Jimmy Kerr in recognition of his outstanding civic engagement, excellent leadership in enduring, enduring commitment to the welfare of Pinal County and its residents.
Give me my face and all your other accolades that you've been given for many, many years. But, you know, Jimmy, when I first got elected to the city council in Casa Grande, the very first meeting that I attended, that he, it was a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the city council. He grabbed me, he said, "You sit right here," and every time we had a meeting, he made me sit next to him, and he filled me in on all the background, on the stuff that's come into force. He has nurtured me, he's coached me, he's been a wonderful friend, wealth of knowledge, and I'm very proud of this award.
Very nice big smile. Three, two. There we go. District four, Jeff McClure.
All right, thank you, Chairman. My, my person that I picked is sure, is not unpaid. He's a paid professional. He's a firefighter, and he's an EMT, but it goes beyond putting out fires and saving lives. Jeff Heaton's the chief of the Arizona City Fire District, and his wife Stacy's here with him. He's taken Arizona City, which is five square miles, just under his belt. I mean, he came there nine years ago, and it's kind of just going along. It's an unincorporated city, so it's just this area. He gets teased about being the mayor of Arizona City. I like to say that to him because he gets all red. But the things that he does for the community, in the summer, they've got water, water and safety days. They do 21 days in the summer when the kids have nothing else to do. They do about 100 to 150 kids a day. They serve them lunch, and some of those kids would only have lunch. They don't have meals, so that, they really look forward to that. It's a great thing. I was out there last year when it was like 100 million degrees outside, sitting in a tent. Just, I didn't get in the water, but I was soaking wet from sitting out there. It was a lot of fun, though, to watch the kids have a lot of fun. They do the 30th of July fireworks for 3,500 to 5,000 people in Arizona City. The reason they do July 3rd is because July 4th, they're manning the fire coverage for Casa Grande. They do a Halloween trunk or treat. You've got about roughly 50 vehicles in the parking lot, and they service, and Jeff, you correct me if I'm wrong, but like 1,300 kids come to this thing. It's crazy, and it's a nice, safe place for the kids to be. I was just at a Santa fly-in this year. The helicopter got called away to an emergency medical procedure, so they had a Santa drive-in. But the people come, they've got, they've got Santa in the, in the firehouse. They come and they take pictures, and I swear, people must have been in line for like two and a half hours to come see Santa. It was great. I mean, the community just comes out and supports them. They do a senior outreach every year, six times a year with gift bags, go out and celebrate the seniors. But on Christmas Day, they go out and they serve meals and bring gift bags to the shut-in seniors. About 120, I think, this year is what they're up to. That's pretty great in a community. So that goes far beyond your salary. That's civic engagement. I really appreciate you, Jeff.
Okay, bye, district. When I first heard we were going to do this, of course, I wanted to nominate Mishka for her lifetime achievement. Then they told me it had to be a human being, so I had to rethink it. And then when I think of my district, my area, who's had the most impact on it, would definitely be Harold Christ, who founded Gold Canyon and had the vision for using that state land wisely, creating the resort, which is still there, thriving today. And since he stepped away from that, he hasn't stepped away. He now has another thriving business in the Florence area, which impacts a lot of people. But the boards that he's sat on, and if, if the community needs help, he will, he will be there within an instant. And he's also a historian of the whole area, and he's basically, like I said, the father of Gold Canyon. I, I thought that Christmas was named after him, but I guess that was another guy. So, but anyway, Harold Christ, thank you for everything that you've done, and, and you continue to. There's no end to it, so we want to give you this award, too. Three, two. Nice. One more. Three, two. Big smile. Three, two. There we go. Thank you. Got one of them bacon bits for me. Okay, now back to the one that I jumped the gun on about, from Scottsdale, Scott Hamilton. Of course, we want to always have open space, conserve lands, so we don't have so much sprawl that we can still enjoy the desert that we have. And with the vigorous park program that the county has entered into, we thought it would be great to hear from Scott Hamilton and what a neighboring community has done and how they were able to do it. So, please.
Excellent. Thank you for having me today, Chairman Surti and members of the board. My name again is Scott Hamilton. I'm the Natural Resources Manager for the city of Scottsdale. I've been there a little over 25 years now, so I've, I've seen a lot of the preserve unfold over these years, and we've learned a lot of lessons, and we're always happy to share them. And I know here in Pinal County, you have a lot of areas that are kind of similar, where Scottsdale stretches out to the north and reaches the, the base of some of the mountain, the McDowell Mountains and the Tonto National Forest, very similar to some conditions you have in your county. So, a little bit of history, jumping back to, to the 1950s, which again, wasn't that long ago. Scottsdale was that little red asterix, or the star down in the very south, you know, kind of near Tempe, and that was the town. That was it. And then you can see all the colors on that map, where as Scottsdale expanded to the north through the 50s, 60s, 70s, and even into the 80s. And as that was happening, that's where development was beginning to encroach out into some of the areas of the natural Sonoran Desert, places where the, the citizens, and it's wonderful to be here with you this morning and see you recognizing your citizens and the service of this board, that's where the magic happens. That's where these grassroots efforts start. And that's what happened in Scottsdale, starting as far back as the 50s of that conservation ethic. So one of the things we wanted to do was learn from our neighbors. There were some things happening in the, the areas around us where mountain tops were getting graded off, and houses built on top, and roads built into the side of them. So in 1977, Scottsdale created the Hillside Conservation Ordinance. What basically that did was it said, "No development in the mountains." The city got sued by some landowners, ultimately lost under private property rights that the city couldn't tell the landowners that they couldn't build on those hills. So that ethic was still there for conservation, so what the city did was circled back and came up with a new method. We call that the ESLO, the E-S-L-O, environmentally sensitive land ordinance. The difference with this ordinance was it was created through broad-based collaboration. The, the landowners, the zoning attorneys, the conservationists, the, you know, in Scottsdale, the tourism community is huge. All of those people were at the table, and what ESLO did was it provided choices and incentives. Didn't say you couldn't build on those hills, but it incentivized not building on them. Developers could transfer densities into other areas that weren't as sensitive, provides amended development standards, and requires the dedication of natural area open space. Since then, knock on wood, it's been successful. There's been no litigation, and it's been in place since around 1990. But that bottom sentence there in, in the yellow, we still wanted to protect the land, and the only way to truly do it 100% is to purchase it. So this is where our citizenry really stepped up, and we, you know, we, similar to, to your county, we have some very active conservationists and people in our town. In 1991, they created the McDowell Sonoran Land Trust. Today, that's the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy. We've always had excellent leadership from the Scottsdale City Council and the mayors that we've had, you know, as far back as Herb Drinkwater. 1993, they converted in, the group into a task force, and then that became our Preserve Commission, which we have still today. And then in 2000, they established the Preserve Ordinance, which set out the goals and objectives. And the, the image on the right-hand side, the People's Preserve, that's the cover. We actually have a little history book about the creation of our Preserve. You can purchase it for a couple of bucks on Amazon, but if you go to Scottsdale's website, you can also download it, the PDF version, at no cost. So all this vision's there, all these plans, but how are we going to actually do this? Collaboration was key, again, having all those people at the table. And then education was crucial. People aren't going to step up and protect a resource if they don't know what it is, if they don't understand it. They can't love it if they don't understand it, and they're not going to support it if they don't love it. So this image on the right, that's Yvonne Massman. She's still on our staff today. That picture was probably in the, the early 90s. We started leading hikes, hike after hike, and just trying to get people to come out and see these areas. We even targeted third graders. We, we were doing third grade class field trips to get the kids out, teach them about the desert, the plants, the animals, you know, desert adaptations, things like that, with the hope that when the ballot hit, that their parents heard from their kids how special the desert was. So when we had tax initiatives to support the conservation, that people were just more aware of, of what was going on. We queued in on Preservation Champions, the landowners, the development community. The media was crucial. You know, at that time, this was before social media, a lot of editorials. I have folders full of old newspaper editorials written, mostly in support of the Preserve, but there, there was also a lot of naysayers. So 1995, the voters approved a 0.2% tax. 2004, they added another 0.15. So we have 35 hundredths of 1% of our sales tax goes to purchase of land. That second tax also allowed the improvements, which I'll touch on here briefly, of our trailheads. 2018, the voters approved a charter amendment. There was some concern that there was too much authority Somebody could come and pull a building permit and start to build on it. So, we went after that first. Then we moved on to the state land, and two things helped us out a lot. 1996, the Arizona Preserve Initiative. And then in 1998, the Growing Smarter Act. Both of those helped us out immensely. Excuse me. In buying the state land, and I know you guys have a lot of state land in your county, one thing that I learned is it's better to think of it as private land rather than public land. The goal of the land department is to make money off of that land to support the trust. So, we learned a lot about keeping the trust whole. So, if that's a piece of land, what they were able to do is decrease density on part, increase density on the other part, decrease value, increase value. As long as it comes out as a whole, you're okay. So, we applied to the state to reclassify the lands. And in 2001, the land commissioner approved a commission order that basically, and this is our general plan, downgraded the densities on some of the land, the purple, and increased densities on the red. Again, keeping the trust whole. We had suitable for conservation and not suitable for conservation, and the land in the purple was cheaper, the land in red is much more expensive. So, the next step was to update the zoning, because it's the zoning that truly locks in the value of the land. And when we wanted to buy our last piece of really critical land from the state, they said, "Sure, we can do that. We'll consider putting it up for auction if you help us get through the zoning process on the remaining." So, we processed a zoning case. Of course, there's no expectation to read the numbers on this chart. The purpose of it is, all those blue columns was the original zoning, and the brown ones on the right was the new proposed zoning. Bottom line is it equals out at the bottom. The value is there in its whole. So, a quick summary, we now have 30,000 acres, about a third of the area of the city, and the only way to get rid of that land is by a vote of the people. So, then, planning and developing the access. We have over 200 miles of trails, eight major trailheads, a lot of neighborhood access points, and this was all guided by public input. This is just some of our master plans. We have design standards. And just to give you a quick example of our Pima Dynamite Trailhead, which in your packet, there's more detail than this, but these are the brief version. We do a lot of site analysis, where we analyzed all of the impacts on the land, and then tailored our parking lot improvements and the trailhead improvements around that, so that we had as little disturbance as possible. We planned functional spaces. We've learned a lot of lessons over time. We salvaged plants. We even go down to the small cactus, excuse me, with our volunteers. Take a lot of steps to reduce consumption. We also did a lot of trail planning. We bought land that had a lot of old trails on it. So, that was actually quite a challenge of figuring out which trails to keep, which ones to change. We did that with heavy citizen involvement, tons of meetings, lots of field walks. If I can give you guys one tip, and I know you're doing some trail work in the county, focus on professional trail builders, people that are specialized in trail building. It really helps out a lot. So, quick summary, again, lots of trails, lots of trailheads, a very, we wanted people in the neighborhoods to be able to get to the Preserve without getting in their car, so we have lots of trail connections into the neighborhoods. And currently, we have about a million visits per year. Now, managing, of course, I mentioned the charter. We have our Preserve Ordinance. Our master plans and our policies are all the critical things that we use to manage the Preserve. But most importantly, our partnerships, primarily the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy. Hopefully, I can get through this before I totally lose my voice. We have partnerships with lots of agencies, including Maricopa County, the state of Arizona. This is one of the crucial things that helps us manage the Preserve. This is the little diagram. City council is the, the buck stops with them. They are the ones that make all the final decisions about the Preserve. But we have our Preserve Commission. We have the city staff, which includes me. And then we have our partnership with the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy, which is over 500 volunteers. So, really, this is the last slide, and this is really the basic summary. Our success was based on that broad-based collaboration. If it wasn't for that, it would not have succeeded. It was driven by our citizens, similar to, you know, being able to be here today and see you honor your citizens. Those are the people that drive it and make it happen. The crucial leadership from the city council and the mayor, the mayors, over all these years. Also, our local funding source. We didn't have those sales taxes, you know, nobody's ever gonna give us anything for free. We were able to transfer densities and, you know, do some things like that. But really, having that tax source was crucial. And the partnerships, you know, with all of those different state agencies, all the different divisions of the city of Scottsdale, the partnership with the McDowell Sonoran Conservancy, crucial to making all of that happen. And then, if I could give you any tip, too, dream big. I have newspaper articles from back in the 90s that somebody took a full-page ad out and said, "Beware of the billion-dollar boondoggle." People thought it was gonna just waste all the money and fail. And here we are. We've made it. Our Preserve is huge. It's a critical element of the city, draws tourists, and, yeah, we're thrilled. And if I can ever impart any of that information on other groups like this board to learn from some of those things we've learned, we're happy to do it, because the more conserved open space that we can have, I think it's good for everybody. So, happy to answer any questions. And follow-up, you know, in the future, if any of you want to track me down, I'm always happy to chat, or if you want to ever come visit, do a field trip, be happy to do that, too.
Any questions or comments? So, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What was the rate of the sales tax that you added for the parks or the trails?
Our first one was 0.2%.
Okay.
And the second one was 0.15. So, it's 0.35 total.
Oh, so they combined, it lapped over the top of it?
They're separate funds, but they do a lot of the same stuff. And it's, in total, when we get to the end, because, you know, we sold bonds, so there's debt service and, you know, a lot of other fees and things that are in there, but we're probably looking about 1.7 to 1.8 billion that the city will have spent to create the Preserve.
Yeah. We don't have the advantage of being able to do sales tax. That's the downside to that. We'd have to add it to a property tax. But that's it, but just under a half a cent, basically, is what you're at?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to comment, I mean, we're a large county, and we all have different districts. I have the most mountainous district with the most foothills, where it would be a natural to do this, but the voters in Coolidge, Casa Grande don't have that passion for my district. And then, like, if you go to the foothills around Maricopa, so it'd be definitely difficult to get a countywide referendum on that, because, except everybody cares about their own district. Where Scottsdale or a city, you have one like-thinking mind there. So, that is a difficult challenge that we would have, that, so if there's any other way we can put it to, you know, because each district deserves to have space put away, and we don't want to see them built on our mountain tops either. So, great information. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Joel Millman on the Pinnell County Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Per the rules, can we change the order of things in here, number 14? We have engineers sitting in the room who normally make 100-plus an hour, losing money.
I believe we could do that, yes. So, Joel, stand by. We're gonna jump over everything and go to item number 14.
Works, Pinnell County Development Services Director, Managing Director. I'm here to present item 14. Thank you for moving it up. Appreciate it, get some of my time back.
I know your wages, too.
Yeah, thank you. This item is a request from staff to suspend the implementation of the Resolution 110123-CD, which is the septic fee analysis and, well, is a septic fee schedule that was recently passed and was brought to the board last week. And we heard the public's concerns, and we would prefer to delay it, allow staff to go ahead and fulfill some of the requests as far as doing a study. And that, in turn, will hopefully get some comfort level to the contractors and the engineers, making sure that they're able to get that comfort level of where these charges are coming from. So, basically, that study would be a cost-recovery-type-method study. I know previously, we threw out some numbers that by ADQ delegation authority, we were allowed to do, as long as those numbers didn't come over what the today's ADQ charges were, and they weren't. But what they were back in, so a little background, back in 2021, the county actually did a fee schedule study, but it was all encompassing of all the community development fees and some public works-type fees. It was done through a third party, and at that point in time, we just didn't get it all tied up. There were some holes in it that we just weren't comfortable with pushing forward. But it did have that segment of septic fees in there that we were able to at least take a look at to make sure we were in the realm. That's kind of how we developed the first fee schedule. But understanding the concerns of the public that are out there right now and some of those contractors, yeah, I think this would be a great opportunity for staff to go back, refresh that study, and then come back with some tighter numbers that I think will make everybody a little more easier on how we got to these dollars. Also, I think this is a great opportunity, because I know I've been in contact with several of the contractors before the last meeting, and I don't know, one of their concerns also was the timing of all this, and trying to give them a little transition in moving forward with some of these numbers. So, this will also help with that issue as well, because we think the study, if we get it going, as soon as we get the blessing from the board, we should be able to come back, hopefully in March. And then at that point in time, we'll present to the board of what our findings are, and it'll be the board's pleasure to move forward with that or not.
Any questions or discussion? Down to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important that everybody knows that we did a study, but as Mr. Ortiz mentioned, it was a very broad study, but it was encompass of the septic system manpower, and so the state allows two different methods to come up with the, your fee schedules.
Correct.
One, you can adopt the states, or you can do a cost recovery. In 2021, we did that, and we looked at a whole lot of different departments and fees, and we came up with a cost recovery. So, these numbers that were published recently are, were based off of the 2021 cost-recovery scenario. So, I think it's a good idea that we push everything else aside, and we're just gonna focus on the septic fee schedule and take it from there. I guess there's a, there's a chance that those numbers will look different, because we probably pay higher wages now than we did in '21, but we're gonna focus directly on the septic fee schedule, and we'll come back with a recommendation from there. And we won't, and I think that's fair, and I guess we put everybody on notice that, by the way, probably sometime in March, there will be a new fee schedule. So, start preparing your contracts in the future for that type of structure. But, yeah, if we can suspend where we're at, we'll go back, I don't know, it might have to reissue permits with new numbers on them or give people credit or something. I don't know how you want to, bookkeeping wants to handle all of that, but I think that's, it's fair. We've heard from the public, and we're gonna do what we can, and we will come back with a new fee schedule.
Correct.
Is the way I understand what we're gonna do here. Is that correct?
You are correct. You are correct. Yeah, there will be some accounting that we'd have to go back for some of those applicants that are, that are kind of in that limbo stage of, and going back to the old, original fee schedule until we get this clean.
Sure. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. I had to leave the meeting early last week because of a prior commitment that I had, so I wasn't able to listen to a lot of the discussions and things of that nature. But there was something interesting, though, the two individuals that spoke during public comment. They suggest that we didn't spend a lot of time, staff didn't spend a lot of time, in a complete study. Is their statements correct?
Well, there was a study done that we kind of used as guidelines. We didn't start a new, fresh study, but we kind of used that '21 study as a guide, just to make sure we were in the realm. And our goal was to make sure that we weren't charging more than what ADQ charges today.
Okay. And then to reiterate with Supervisor Miller, that was some, that was, those were the very comments that I was wanting, or he eloquently did it better than I would have ever done.
Yeah.
But the reality is, is that those were some of my concerns as well. And the fact of the matter is, you know, one thing that I got in an email was that there was not a substantial amount of time that was, they weren't notified of these increases. My understanding is we sent something out in September. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We sent emails out to quite a few.
Okay. All right, all right. But, yeah, I'm along with this as far as suspending it for now, but based on what Supervisor Miller said, we've increased our wages quite a bit, and so, and we're gonna be, this is all a recapturing of our fees, correct?
Correct. It's a cost-recovery method.
A cost recovery.
Yeah, and that's only fair, I believe, and so, but, yeah, I can see this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody? Motion? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 14. It's presented.
Second.
Friendly amendment.
What?
Friendly amendment. So, and that would include directing staff to conduct a fee study related to the Aqua for Protection Department and its operational cost fees charged, and discuss that, discuss the fee study results at a future work session.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's what we will be doing.
Yeah, that's actually a part of the policy process that they have to do related to fee schedules.
So, it's already in there, right? So it's already in there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we will be coming back, yeah.
Okay.
Kevin, are you satisfied with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So I still second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it?
Thank you.
Now, back to Joel on the workforce.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, I'd like to wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Leo, Chris, Natasha, and Kelsey. Thanks for your support this past year. Joel Millman, Workforce Development Manager with the Pinal County Economic and Workforce Development Department, also Director for Arizona Work Pinal County. Every four years, the Pinal County Workforce Development Board is required to develop a plan outlining how we intend to provide services under Arizona Work Pinal County grant. Our current plan is in its last year, expiring on December 31, 2024. The new plan is to be submitted to the State Workforce Development Board, the Workforce Arizona Council, by September 2024 for initial review. It'll come before this body, before it gets to the Workforce Arizona Council. But in order to lay the foundation for that planned development, the Pinal County Workforce Development Board consulted with Sheila Murphy, LLC, to revisit the Workforce Board's own strategic plan. Right now, it's my honor, given his recognition today, to introduce Harold Christ as the Chair of the Pinal County Workforce Development Board. And Harold will provide a bit of a background on the development of the Board's strategic plan, and Sheila Murphy, who will provide an overview of that plan itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for taking the time to hear probably one of the more important issues that's going around our communities, our county, and probably the country, as we see so many people that are having to kind of reinvent themselves as far as their businesses are concerned. Whether they're having to find new employment, be retrained, and one of the, probably one of the more effective manners of doing that has been Arizona at Work. And it's been my privilege to serve as, on this board for the last few years and as chairman this year. It's part of the economic development team that James Smith has put together, and of course, with Joel Millman's leadership. And it's a, it's really a very, very interesting process to see what is happening within the different age categories as we retrain people who have lost their jobs and are looking forward to finding something else, and/or young people who are coming along, have never had a job, and are looking for something to do in those veins as well. So as Joel mentioned, almost four years ago now, we did the first strategic planning update, and it's time to do another one. A lot of things have changed in the last few years. COVID took a tremendous hit on a lot of things, and it's changed the outlook that we had on different things that we were trying to implement and just could not accomplish in the way that we thought that should be done. So Sheila Murphy and her team have come back to us, and we've implemented with them, we think, with something that you're gonna really appreciate and will make a difference in Pinal County going forward. So Sheila, are you?
Thank you, Harold and Joel. Good morning. Delighted to be presenting to Chair Sertie and all of the supervisors here for Pinal Dr. Tracy Reginald and I were very pleased to have the opportunity to return to the Pinal County Workforce Board to assist them in foraging along and getting a new, refined set of strategies for the strategic plan for the Workforce Board that we all together worked on in 2020. And many things had changed in the environment. Obviously, there are new growth-based businesses coming, there are needs for workers, and the impact of the COVID pandemic and so forth had been vast. So we had many more things to work with, exciting things to pursue. And I'm going to give you a brief overview of how the strategic plan has changed toward the next several years to support Pinal County. First of all, the Board designed a vision, which in the strategic planning realm, as you know, basically states what it will look like when the Workforce Development Board and the workforce endeavor throughout Pinal County puts together and responds to and fulfills the mission for workforce development. The strategic vision essentially says how it will look. And here is what the Board designed. "Pinal County is a vibrant, affordable community, home to a skilled, diverse workforce, providing innovative opportunities for job seekers, employers, and employees to learn, grow, and prosper." This strategic vision guided the development of three main goals, and we'll go through those and the strategies with a little attention to the metrics as well. Essentially, the mission that will be fulfilled by the Board and by workforce development includes six different purposes in the workforce law. So this strategic vision that we just addressed responds to what it will look like. It shows you what it will look like to fulfill this mission. The first of three goals, there are three goals, and each goal has three strategies. So it's all nicely balanced and very clear, we believe. The first goal is to enhance the talent pipeline of work-ready individuals and connect that diverse workforce with high-quality, sustainable jobs. Very powerful goal, and three supporting strategies to go with that. The first of the strategies pertains to career pathways. Invest in career pathways that respond to several, several target industry sectors. And I think you're well aware of them, but just for quick reiteration, tourism hospitality, natural resources, advanced manufacturing, aerospace and defense, healthcare, transportation and logistics, and skilled trades. And that strategy will be basically measured by criteria that employers set for career pathways. What do you need? The number of career pathways available and quarterly enrollment in those career pathways. A second of three strategies supporting the first goal for talent pipeline of ready-to-work people is essentially pertaining to work readiness and competencies through education and training. And so the measures we'll look at throughout this time are needs assessment of skills and competencies needed according to those industries being served, workforce statistics, you know, how many students there are and so forth, talent pipeline information, that is apprenticeships and training programs. So looking at that first goal, the education side of it. The third of these strategies is essentially post-secondary and college and workforce training. And that builds the number of programs available. We need to look at capacity. Another of the metrics takes into account that how many training firms and deliverers of service do we have to respond to the needs of training? And the enrollment we'll look at, and of course, the big one, measurable skills gain at post-secondary ed. The second big goal, two of three, is the main role of the Workforce Development Board as a strategic convener throughout Pinal County and beyond, to look at bringing together people to help them understand what workforce development actually does. So the first of the three strategies here is to be the strategic convener to get everyone familiar with what workforce development services are involving, what programs and services people can get. And the metrics are very clear and simple here. A report of hosted events, first of all, involving all kinds of audiences, including elected officials such as yourselves, and essentially educators, community members, and so forth. And the second is a report of marketing materials, all the different media that go out to help people become aware of what's going on with workforce development. The second of the three strategies to support the strategic convener, or Goal Two, is to partner with employers in the multiple target industry sectors we just referenced a moment ago. So how do we measure that? Simple metrics, quarterly reported meetings, a report of the meetings with the Board of Supervisors as well, and a report on participation, board participation in all kinds of community development efforts. The third strategy to support the strategic convener goal is essentially education and engagement, engaging job seekers, educators, and families to help people understand what new jobs nobody before had ever heard of are suddenly available because of all the economic opportunity in Pinal County. And so metrics here will measure how many hosted events, work sessions with a variety of audiences, as you see, and then a report of job fairs as well to help everybody understand what's available. The third broad goal of three with its three strategies is create aligned and innovative methods of service delivery that demonstrate relevance and responsiveness in a changing economy. The whole idea here is, of course, alignment, innovation. And the first of the three strategies has to do with removing barriers, getting rid of what keeps people from growing and developing. And so to look at removing the barriers that help employers get better numbers and quality of people, we'll look at several metrics to help make sure that happens. Report of dropouts and completers of programs, types of barriers and what has been done about, report of participation in paid training programs, and finally, new hires in high-quality jobs by industry sectors. The second strategy is essentially service delivery both in given locations and in mobile and virtual service manners, so that people can be served in ways that show relevance and show obviously responsiveness as they can use these services. So of course, we'll look at the awareness by employers and job seekers of these opportunities. We'll look at the perceived access and relevance and value, both by employers and by job seekers. And finally, enrollments in all the different types, location-based, mobile, and virtual. Finally, on Goal Three, three different, excuse me, the third of the strategies is alignment with the whole region. Pinal County plays a very prominent role in workforce development. You know that Joel and his board have, Harold and his board have been recognized by national workforce associations for their excellence and innovation in workforce development. Well, this strategy has to do with aligning with the regional partners, professional associations galore, and with the Arizona Workforce Council, our state workforce lead, and the Department of Economic Security to drive learning and innovative change. Now, the metrics here, we look at the board member participation in all kinds of professional and trade organizations, the report of boards' attendance and presentation at conferences, and of course, coordination of events with state. So essentially, when you look at the entire matter here of the updated strategies, we've sharpened them together, we've made them more frankly responsive to the current picture, and feel very confident that workforce development for Pinal County plays a profound role in supporting economic development and quality of life for Pinal County. I appreciate your attention to this presentation, and we feel very fortunate to have the opportunity to workforce, to work with the Workforce Board on behalf of all the great work you do here in Pinal County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Joel, is that everything? Okay, in the spirit of moving the agenda to make it more flow better, since we're talking about jobs, I would like to now move item number 16 up, which is also about jobs and economic development. So if, James, if you could introduce what's proposed with GPEC.
Great, thanks, Chairman Sertie, Board members. We've been in discussions with GPEC for, Leo and I, for approximately a year regarding what membership might look like, how we could be a part of the group. I think we've all talked about how Pinal County, there used to kind of be this dividing line, but we are really becoming kind of the lifeblood, part of the lifeblood of the metro Phoenix area. You see that particularly with electric vehicles, with the semiconductor supply chain, much of which will serve companies in Maricopa County and the Phoenix metro area. So we really are becoming more a part of the Phoenix metro area, and we thought it was a natural that we kind of looked to, to how we might participate with GPEC. Just a few things about, about GPEC. They really are an award-winning organization that had, you know, that is in constant discussion with site selectors, is constantly has this pipeline of prospects. And I think what you'll see in Chris Camacho's presentation when he comes up is, even though we haven't had the whole county covered, currently only Maricopa, Casa Grande, Apache Junction, and Queen Creek are part of GPEC, we really are seeing the benefits of that countywide. And we really want to extend that to all of our communities to provide that opportunity to, you know, that we can have that first look at, at all of these prospects throughout our county. One of the things that, you know, as I said, they're in constant dialogue with site selectors, traveling, it's really a cost-effective way to make sure Pinal County is top of mind for, with real estate brokers, with site selectors that really make these major decisions for company locates. So with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Chris, and then if you have any questions of me after, I'd be happy to take those.
All right, thank you, James, and great to see all the supervisors here today. Thanks for welcoming both Tim and myself to join you. And I do have a very brief presentation for you, but we'll leave ample time for questions. So as, as James alluded to, my name's Chris Camacho. I've been the CEO for the last 10 years, have been with the organization for 15. Our primary scope of work is to ensure that, that the marketing, the sales, and ultimately the execution of job creation can be supported by an organization like ours. So since our inception in 1989, today, roughly 80% of the resources that are in GPEC are privately funded, and 20% come from Maricopa County and 21 other public jurisdictions. And so the intent is to engage Pinal County today. One, because as James talked about, we think there's incredible market opportunity for alignment. And ultimately, companies around the world, and I'll unpack this a little bit further, they don't necessarily look at a city, a specific city. So they don't think about just Phoenix, or just Casa Grande, or Tempe, or Glendale, et cetera. They evaluate a trade area, a market. And so they're going through their due diligence process, that's really what we're there to do, to not only market to them, but ultimately synthesize what the value proposition for a company is to invest in a region. And I do believe this, this market is developing into a mega-region, and there's attributes of Pinal County that are very distinctive, that are very complementary to Maricopa County, and so hence, that's why I'm here today. So again, I told James and the team I'd be very brief. I know former Mayor Sertie knows that, we like to dig in deep to what we do. But I will touch, I think I just have seven quick slides, and then I'd be happy to leave it open for questions. So first and foremost, we're a 501(c)(3) organization. As you can see, our mission statement is to attract and grow high-quality jobs and advance for the region's competitive position. We do not get involved in public policy actions, anything other than simply we focus on what will make the market and the state more will make the, the market and the state more competitive. So, you won't see us down at the Capitol taking political positions, we may talk about a cost structure, or a tax implication, or a regulatory policy, but we stay out of the political dynamics as it relates to that. The history of GPEC, as you can see here, we've supported 987 companies. Myself and our team are out in front of the major corporate decision-makers all around the world, whether it's in Taiwan, and South Korea, and Japan, or domestically, notably in Dallas, California, Chicago. Our team is out talking about the state, talking about the region, in most likely a differentiated way than, than any other economic development shop across the state. And we're very analytically driven, as, as you'll see here in a moment, but we've induced the support of 8, 181,000 high-wage jobs, and induced $65 billion of capital since our inception. I'm the fourth CEO, so there's a lot of consistency with, with the organization. I will say, when I joined back in 2008, not a great time to come to Phoenix, but nonetheless, joined at that time, and we were reeling for 17 quarters in a, in a very exhaustive recovery. Our plan in, in 2008, '09, '10, and '11 was not only to induce the recovery, but to put a different economic strategy in place, which we did under Governor Brewer, that we were able to advance under Governor Ducey, and worked very closely with the mayors, supervisors in the region, and ultimately, today, we're one of the leading manufacturing hubs of the West Coast. And you've seen technology jobs and high-wage jobs being lured to the valley and, and the coinciding cities, and a large part of that is this regional system, this regional offering of how we interface with, with companies. So, you can see what I mentioned before, 200-plus private sector companies believe in our mission, believe in what we do, and that gives leverage to our public sector jurisdictions, on average, about a three-to-one value proposition benefit. So, to boil it down very quickly, these are the, the core services we provide. We do operating cost analysis for global companies to look at total cost of operations in a annual, in a 10- to 20-year per forma. We'll help them analyze real estate, utility, cost delivery, the labor and analytics supply. The former speaker mentions the important, importance of labor. It's, it's about the labor supply of today through the community colleges and universities, but also around the technical schools, the high schools, and making sure we're well-equipped to give that quantitatively-driven narrative to companies. We also go pretty deeply into the labor market data as well. As you can see, we have a tremendous number of databases that we will perform, pretty significant levels of data synthesis, and ultimately bring employers to speak to prospective companies. And, and I'll show you here in a moment, all of the companies that we've had the pleasure of working with, several of which that have landed in this county. And, and I probably find to boil this down, you know, to why this makes sense in my discussions with Leo and James, there are times when our team will be courting a company that's looking at Buckeye and Glendale, and, and parts of the southeast valley of, of Maricopa County. They'll look at Casa Grande, they'll look at parts of Eloy or Coolidge. Historically, because of our membership structure, we technically have to stop at that jurisdictional line once we showcase the current membership team with Casa Grande, so areas like Eloy and Coolidge, or an unincorporated, unincorporated site of Pinell County would not be represented. So, that creates a dynamic when we're trying to represent the interests of the company to ensure that we have a partnership with, with the county here that would enable us to carry that through, all the way through its decision-making process. You'll also see site selection assistance, there's, there's 50 different nodes of information that companies go through as they're evaluating, whether it's a site zoning entitlements. We have a, a lot of, you know, capabilities and, and support of, you know, helping those companies go through that process. We do economic impact analysis, I think I've got an example of that here in a moment. Connectivity to key resources, that is a fundamental role we play. So, when a company comes in, whether they're in quantum computing, or they're in distribution, or anything in between, we map out the kind of level service that the company will need to connect to key resources in the market, could be universities, could be companies, could be counties working through an air quality permit. There's just a myriad of different things that come up, we're that point of service for them. And then lastly, PR is, you know, will support the, the announcement of the company. We did so, over the last two weeks, we had the, the Prime Minister from the Netherlands here to announce a major manufacturing project in, in North Scottsdale around ASM, one of the leading companies, that's Dutch, making investment here in Arizona. So, we'll support all those kind of efforts as well. So, just to give you a quick kind of last five-year scan, these are the projects that have landed in the region, and you'll see, you know, there's been a number of projects, and I'll just pull them up because there were so many, I'll touch on them quickly, but companies from Lucid Motors landing in, in Casa Grande through LG Energy Solutions, which is a $5 billion project in, in Queen Creek, to a number of the key semiconductor suppliers tied to TSMC. As James, James mentioned, the EV battery and semiconductor sector continues to evolve in the United States, and we are one of the top U.S. markets for that today. We've won a number of the foundries and the OEMs. The next stage is supporting all the supply chain base, several of which have landed in, in Pinell County. Also, companies like Procter &amp; Gamble, and Nicola, I met the Nicola leadership team back in 2016, and they've continued to invest not only in Coolidge, but in multiple manufacturing and HQ investments across the region as well. So, again, we represent the entirety of the market, the 5 million people that live in the metro, and, and we believe adding, you know, the 450-plus or minus thousand that live in Pinell County would, would continue to add to the regional base of offering for companies, and at the end of the day, create high-wage jobs. So, these are a couple of those brands I referenced, working with, with PNG and Kohler, and PNG was that example, Procter &amp; Gamble that I mentioned. We worked through that whole courting process, and ultimately, they landed in the jurisdictions outside of GPEC's current service offering, so we continue to support them. However, it, it creates a, an unnatural hosting process when we have to stop across the jurisdictional line, and so we believe having Pinell County fully invested with us will negate that issue. So, naturally, as, as you can see, sales and marketing organizations, one thing I didn't touch on is, we, we do a tremendous amount of competitiveness evaluation, and this is one thing I would offer to Pinell County that's differentiated from the norm, is that we go into each of our local community jurisdictions, and we analyze the general plan, we'll analyze the infrastructure plans, the CIPs, we'll understand where the land bases are, so that we can help improve the competitiveness offering for companies. So, all of these companies I referenced here, they want to go into markets that are future-looking, have infrastructure in place, or planned infrastructure that, that's very visible, and they want turnkey solutions. So, our job is to help public jurisdictions understand that, understand the needs of these companies, and, and make sure we're well-positioned across all of our public jurisdictions. And then how we do that, when we announce a project, we, we go through what's called an ROI analysis for every single project, even if you go back what's on that screen here, every single one of these dots, and this is just the fiscal years that we've had over the last five, and where they've all landed. We will go through a direct tax revenue generation for each particular project, we'll do a direct and induced. There's always a lot of speculation, or even, you know, criticality on the induced jobs impact, and what we'll, what we've done is, we've worked with applied economics to look at not only the direct tax revenue generated for that public jurisdiction, but also what are the migratory patterns of that new dollar being created. So, when Kohler comes into Pinell County, makes an investment, they have real and personal property tax generation, they'll have short-term construction sales taxes generated for the, the local jurisdiction, and, and certainly the state and the locality as well. And then we will, we will run separate, independent from that, a multiplier effect, so that we understand, you know, these new dollars being brought into the valley and, into the region, what kind of economic impact that that has, and we report that back out on an annual basis to all of our public jurisdictions via contract. So, I wanted just to touch on a few of those items very quickly. We ran this 44-to-1 ROI assessment based upon the request, which would be $150,000 annual commitment to the organization against all of the projects that have landed over the last several years in, in Pinell County. And my expectation is, we would see roughly this kind of ROI on a routine basis with the, the migratory pattern that we're seeing of companies wanting to access land up and down I-10, and then out in this part, you know, part of the county as well. So, again, I'd be happy to, to pause there and, and answer any questions. It's a very comprehensive organization, large board, it, it's really the who's who of the valley and, and the county and the region, and so this would be our first foray into a multi-county mega-region as I see it going forward. So, with that, supervisors, I'd love to pause and answer any questions you might have.
Were you going to pause, or are you finished?
I'm, I'm, I'll pause, and then I'll be ready to answer questions if you have.
Okay. Are there any, I have some statements, but are there any questions?
Well, just a quick one, can you help us figure out the cost of a sewer permit? Pretty good analytics there.
I wasn't supervisor, I wasn't here for that part of it, but I'd love to help any way we can, I don't know if we can help you with that one.
Well, I just want to interject that, you know, in a lot of our areas, 80 or 90% of our citizenry commutes into, into Maricopa County, we want to change that, we want to live, play, and work at home, which, which would, which can happen. We have the underused Pinell Air Park down there, the, the possibilities with that, so if we do combine our forces, I'd like somebody from GPEC to go down there and take a tour and see just what could happen down there. And a lot of, people move here from a nastier area where I wouldn't want to live, to the west of us, or wherever, they want to know where to play as well. Pinell County has much more, yeah, you've got major sports teams, but if you want to explore the mountains, or our parks, or our things to do here, I think that ties in as well, which would be another way to showcase Pinell County, is there's things to do here, and you might not want to live so close to the metro, you might want to live out here, so, with recruiting. And also, once, if we become a member, then your staff basically becomes our staff too, right? If we need something, we can rely on you to, you have connections not only in the country, but the whole, the whole world.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can make one comment about that, so, in addition to the core, you'll, you'll see a business plan re-release every year, you'll see a, a three-year strategic plan, but embedded within that is a research and analytics support function. So, if, if the supervisors and/or staff said, Chris, I'm very interested in better understanding the supply chain to Lucid Motors, and what kind of potential might be available to support our residents and job creation, our analytics team is, is pretty deep in understanding supply chains, industries, and even looking at, again, those, those tax impacts that could be generated from a type of industry or a type of project, and/or the diversity of where your revenues coming from. These are kind of deep aspects of what we do for all of our public jurisdictions that are available to you.
Mr. Chair, I just, I think personally, it's a great tool in our toolbox for economic development, broadens our resource base, I think that's a terrific asset.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you were describing this, the county gets involved, then that brings the ability to work with Coolidge and Eloy?
Yeah, that's correct, Supervisor Miller. So, what we've talked about with staff is the ability to submit projects, submit land, I should say, some land or buildings that you have within those jurisdictions, in partnership with the county. The way that that works is, any jurisdiction, published jurisdiction, when we send out what we call an E-trac to any one of our member partners, they submit back to us, we package all of the real estate opportunities up, along with all the industry and labor analytics, and then that gets put in front of the company. So, at the end of the day, by Pinell County coming in, the coverage of all of these jurisdictions would be now under the county.
So, I want to go to membership, then would Casa Grande not become, stay, stay a member, and they just come under the umbrella of Pinell County and Maricopa?
So, those incumbent cities, supervisor, that are already members of GPEC, we have the same structure with Maricopa County and all of the jurisdictions, so they would stay members of the organization. What it does is, it gives us the resources to continue to drive forward what we do within our action plan. What we would do with those four jurisdictions that have some resident base in Pinell County is to maintain the relationship with us, and at the same time, any other jurisdictions would be channeled through the county. But in my conversations with James, they would see all of these quote-unquote E-tracs or deal opportunities, and then they would submit back through the county and onto GPEC. So, everyone would have the ability to submit to us.
My point is, though, Casa Grande doesn't, they relinquish their membership with you just and come under the umbrella of Pinell County. I, I mean, you see where I'm going with this?
I do.
And I, and the reason I ask the question, though, is, as, I mean, boy, I've watched this stuff for years, I mean, there's, everybody's jockeying for position, and does that give Casa Grande a higher position, they stay as a member, something comes that could fit in a number of, of communities within Pinell County. Does Casa Grande have the upper hand, or because they have, in a sense, a dual membership? I'm just, I'm just playing out scenarios that I've seen in the past, so I'm just...
Yeah, Supervisor, the way that we have it structured today would be that those smaller jurisdictions, because again, we have a governance structure that has 22 cities within it today, our intent is to not continue to add a number of cities. The intent was to bring and unify this kind of bi-county position. It will not create a winner and loser, or a Florence versus Casa Grande. The intent would be to everyone have the ample opportunity to submit based upon their own real estate product within those jurisdictions through us. Where we serve is the independent arbiter of the ability to make sure that, that the land sites are qualified, so they have to be qualified, but then, because that's our reputation, we're putting in front of these national and global site selectors, that's what our team does, is analyze those submissions, anything that's eligible and meets our qualifications gets before the company.
No, I, I understand, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to pierce that out, because that'll be a question that I'll be asked at some mixer sometime, or someplace along the way, and somebody will get something, and somebody else applied for it as well. But, and, it's all good, I mean, I, you guys do tremendous work, you do have a, a lot of data that is important to these site selectors, and you can bring that to the table for everybody. I, I see a positive to, to the scenario, I just playing out something that I might have to deal with someday.
Supervisor Miller, if I could just add, we've spoken with the communities, they, they understand the way this is going to be structured. One of the things that they will continue to have is representation on the GPEC board, and, and some of their companies will be represented on the GPEC board, so they will have additional representation. We, as the county, will have one elected official and one business, so those, those communities will have some enhanced representation as part of their memberships that are aside from the county.
Yeah, I understand.
And, Chris, if you remember from my time on the board, being an ambassador to copper, this also brings all of the copper corridor under GPEC to help to develop and, and to shop around the world, and Resolution's still not been able to make it over that hump, and you guys haven't been able to speak for them. Resolution Copper is in Pinell County, as is Kearney Ray and Superior, so I think that's a great, great win-win for everyone as well.
Don't, don't forget Mammoth.
And Mammoth, yes.
And, you know...
Dudleyville.
And Saminwell.
And there's a copper mine in, in Casa Grande as well, and Florence, Florence Copper's right here as well. So, yeah, all the copper of the state is here.
Yeah, I, I had a call with them last week, and what I can tell you is, we're excited about this. Not only do we believe we need more domestic copper production, but the, in addition to that, the ancillary minerals that we're going to need, if we believe we're going to fuel all of this electric vehicle, all of the battery and energy storage, currently, a lot of that's coming from non-aligned countries around the world, and/or from places that are controlled by non-allied locations or countries. So, we're excited to, to continue to support that, and we'll, we'll be very vocal with our senators and our congressional delegation about Resolution in particular, but others that have needs, so we're excited about the opportunity.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, you said there's key areas in Pinell County, we've mentioned the copper corridor, key areas in Pinell County that are not represented, what, what areas are those?
Yeah, Supervisor, so, one of the, I think what led us to this initial conversation was, we've had projects that, again, looked at our current land area, also when, came in to evaluate Coolidge and Eloy specifically because there are developers and, and land brokerage teams that have improved sites to be as competitive with others across the valley, across the region. And that put us in a, in a unique position where those jurisdictions were historically not covered by our territory. And so, those are two very specific examples, and there's a couple other unincorporated areas of Pinell County, too, that we'd be working in the future more so with, with the staff here, that would enable us to submit those sites and have them ready.
Okay, and this might be a question for James, but who does this work for Pinell County now?
So, our economic development team, you know, we, we do some sites, working with site selection, site selectors, prospecting, but we rely mainly on the ACA, as well as some of GPEC's prospects that come through are their member communities currently.
And James, what about the talk of the inland port that we were going to have?
Can you share more detail with your question, Supervisor Surti?
Leo, what was that talk about the...
Chairman, we've been looking at that, and we did a research project with ASU and St. Holdings on that, and so it was an analysis and evaluation of something like that, what it would take, and what it would do to the economics, both size of it and logistics.
So, this could revive that whole...
Yeah, that's something that could, well, I'm sure continued to be looked at as we further develop.
Yes. Chris, anything else?
The only other thing I would mention, Supervisor Surti, is that, you know, if, if this were to move forward, our, I would be bringing our, not only analytics, but our business development and regional competitiveness team down to meet with James, meet with a lot of the local stakeholders. We like to do that when we add new territories and really grasp your expectations, the market's expectations, and how they're aligned with what we believe we can, we're able to deliver. So, that would come and come upon today's... So that would come and come in upon today's decision. So thanks for the opportunity to be here.
Anyone else?
Good to go, right?
I believe we're good to go for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 16 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries.
Thank you.
Now...
Let me take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Because Dana's going to take a while here.
Yeah. Okay.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinell County Recorder. Some of the most recent updates, there is a video. Let's do this.
So Dana, as you can see, we've started the interior stud framing along with the exterior wall for out.
I think we realized that after the 2022 midterm elections, that space was critical, that we weren't able to move about the way we needed to. The ability to secure a lot of our processes was more difficult.
Now we're in the MDF room, walking into the tabulation room.
So when we started identifying the problems that happened in 2022, one of the very evident changes that needed to be made is that we needed more space to work. And it wasn't just in the elections department, it was also in voter registration, our avid departments, our early voting. All of these processes are growing as our, our voter base grows. So we need to grow with Pinell County.
Once we have the in-wall rough-in completed for the electrical and the plumbing, then we'll start one-siding the walls, then we'll come back and insulate the walls, and then we'll be able to hang the other side and start the tape and finish.
What was fantastic is they brought us into the process at the very beginning. We walked what we originally had, we talked about what parts of it didn't make sense or didn't work. We talked about things we would love to see happen, and then to see them evolve on paper, and now to see them here in, in brick and mortar and steel, it's, it's awesome. Still looking at that May date and definitely in a space where going into the holidays, we can definitely be joyous.
I like the music.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Dana Lewis. Again, great video there. Thank you very much to the communications team in Pinell County for putting that together. The new voting operations technology and education services complex is coming along beautifully. Post-election from November 7th, jurisdictional report statistics are being provided to the school superintendent's office so that reporting deadlines are being met. Can say that Manager Lou had spoke earlier in regards to the Arizona Secretary of State's election official certification program. I am a member of the training team for that. This year, we trained 568 persons, and I can proudly say that it's actually 48 Pinell County staff members are now certified election officials for the state of Arizona. The updated EPM is planning to be approved no later than 12/31, and then the January deadline, we've heard that they will potentially go into a special session to discuss the issue we have with the recount margin and how we're needing to find those additional dates. We had our recent ACO meeting, and then of course, our affiliates meeting with the election officials and the recorders across the state to discuss what that looks like as, you know, together and working together through the problems. Have worked, have been working with our lobbyists to, again, communicate our needs to everyone and believe that we've put together some really great strong points for them to bring to legislators. We are working with the finance and procurement team in regards to the RFP for the GPS systems. 90-day notices for the presidential preference election were mailed out on 12/13. All voters on the active early voting list have received that, and updates, returned updates are being processed daily. I'd like to comment to people who are receiving this and say this person doesn't live here or have never lived there, that means that there's an issue. What can help us clean up our voter rolls is if they do return that to sender, it then returns to us, and that helps us create or start the NVRA process, the National Voter Registrations Act. So we need that to go through the postal service and be returned to us, and that's one of the steps in cleaning up our voter rolls. Due to a recent uptick in angry calls and what I call dislike mail, I don't like to use the word hate, we've been working with communications and the IT team to look at the possibility of screening some of our calls for customer service, training purposes, and safety. And then also, any of the little nasty grams we've been getting have been forwarded to council for review. Voters not on the active early voting list that would like to submit a one-time early ballot to be mailed to them can now request that. They can call 520-866-7560, and our staff will assist them with that. The official ballot order for candidates of the presidential preference election were drawn by the Arizona Secretary of State's Office on Monday, 12/18, at 11:00 hours. Subsequently, ballot designs and layout by the Pinell County Elections Department team were updated and have already been sent to the state and county party chairs and all campaign committees. Ballot proofing binders will be delivered to the Pinell County ballot proofing team today. We need a polling location still for Precinct 20. We had one, we thought, was the sunscape area of Wild Horse, and we had it, we had authorization, they had a meeting, and there is a misnomer that strangers then come into your local area, your precinct to vote, and that's not how we do things in Pinell County. We are precinct-based voting model, so trying to reassure voters, again, that these aren't strangers, these are your neighbors who utilize these facilities to vote. So hoping we can either get that one back. If not, we're going to go and broaden our search in Precinct 20, which is the Randolph area. I would like to send a fabulous shout-out to Supervisor Goodman and to Constance Jackson and Clerk of Apache Junction, Jennifer Penya. Your guys' assistance was so vital in us getting polling locations for Precincts 56, 59, and 87. Thank you so much for that. Again, the cooperation with our stakeholders in the county ensures that our processes move really seamlessly, so wanted to make sure people were recognized for that. Postcards, newspaper ads, billboards, and magazines, marketing initiatives are being created right now, letting voters know how to update their voter registration information and also about some of the major election dates coming up in 2024. We have three federal elections, and the PPE is very different from a lot of other states, so we are doing an aggressive campaign to inform voters. Many thanks to the staff who attended the Arizona Secretary of State's Tabletop Exercise. This was conducted last Friday afternoon and Saturday morning. Supervisor McClure, Lila Lou, Robert Stanley, representatives from IT, Hamachi Patel, Corey Redden, Courtney Prock, Matt Roberts, Jared Smith, and Pinell County Sheriff's Office Representatives. The focus on this tabletop, as you heard earlier discussed, is artificial intelligence. It's a problem. Some people see it as something that can be utilized in a positive way, and I can see that. But they were able to take, with my consent, 30 seconds of my voice and video and create a three-minute video that looks and sounds just like me. Anybody who'd like to see how that looks, I would definitely share that with them, but I'm not going to put it out to the greater things. Voter registration staff recently completed political party petition recognition, signature verification for the Green Party. We now wait for the Arizona Secretary of State's determination for a party recognition for the Green Party at the state level. Current position openings that you approved at the last minute, we moved briskly on that. Interviews were conducted yesterday. We are sending off our letters this week and hope to onboard this staff rather quickly going into 2024. We have been using our HAVA funds, that's the Help America Vote Act grant funds that we receive, to fortify some of our security initiatives, and one of them is bringing on a more secure cage for our equipment at the polling locations. Communications regarding the need for Pinell County employees to work Election Day are going to start going out. Again, for the presidential preference election, we utilize 54 polling locations. So if Pinell County staff or employees that had done this in the past want to start reaching out and say, yes, they want to be part of the process again, we would love to invite them back. Our monthly meetings with the Office of Emergency Management continue. Our next one is planned for this Friday, and we're going to be creating an in-depth chain of command communication plan and with the roles and responsibilities, many of the people who are part of these monthly calls were at our tabletop exercise. It is imperative that all members of our Pinell County community who have a piece of this pie continue that communication forward. This is how we are the best team ever. The Voter Education Working Group, next one is scheduled for January 26th, and our first pre-election communication meeting is scheduled for February 7th, getting us ready for the PPE. One of the other encouraging things is in partnership with the Treasurer's Office and the great communications we have with that department, recently, they brought on a Special Services Administrator, Brandy Schiller, and we meet with her this afternoon so that we can partner with special taxing districts in helping that process move forward more effectively. I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions?
I have a quick one, Mr. Chairman. So when you, we were talking about dislike mail back there and pieces that are sent off for review. I know nationally, we've had election centers and other places get not dislike mail, but even evil mail where it's tampered with, it's got some kind of powder, and we don't know what it is, talcum, something. Have you had any of those kinds of situations?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, members of the board, we were fortunate during this last election cycle, we were not one of the receivers of the substance that was in the post mail. However, comma, but, our staff is apprised of the situation going on in five other states that occurred. We've been in talks with creating a robust training program with Corey Redden, going into the 2024 election cycle to protect our election cycle temps and full-time employees. This is a problem and needing to be aware of it. We've also spoke with the United States Postmaster in Coolidge and in Florence, asking how we can partner and making sure that we're keeping everyone safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned on that same topic, did you say that there have been emails or mail forwarded to the county attorney for review? Was there any threat, threatened, threatening messages to your staff?
No threatening messages to staff, I would say, just the process on a whole. Sorry, Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, it's just distasteful and, and disheartening, and you can only receive that so much as staff before it becomes a little bit burdensome. We thought to be proactive about it, and automatically right out the gate, staff needed to know that we support them, and the first one that came in, we sent over to council.
Okay, and then I think I remember something about the GPS tracking units that weren't working properly or didn't fit our needs last time. Is there a plan to replace those?
So we're currently in the RFP process for the GPS locks. That process takes a little bit of time, but yes, going into this next election, we will ensure that we will be using GPS tracking devices for the items at the polls.
And who is printing our ballots?
At this time, we have an RFP out for contract. I believe our current vendor is still Runback.
Okay, and is Runback the only printer in the state for ballots?
For, in this state, that is correct.
Oh, so the RFP could go out to other states?
It's gone out nationally, sir.
Okay, and so if a ballot is printed, I think last time we had some problems where there weren't enough or so on. If it's an out-of-state company, does that present a problem in getting more ballots printed in a hurry if there was an error or we didn't have enough?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, this is why you don't ever have a single vendor.
Well, I don't think I can answer the question.
So the, the fix to that is to ensure you have redundancies and no single point of failure. So what you do is have absolutely a contract with a vendor in town or in state, and then potentially have vendors outs, out of state.
Okay, so the RFP is for more than, will accept more than one vendor?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else? I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Merry Christmas.
Purchasing Division report, Angie.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. I have the pleasure to present to you today's purchasing division report for December 20th, 2023. The board has requested to approve the following contract award, RFP 242-829 for Pest Control Services. It's recommended that contracts be awarded with United Exterminating Company, University Termite and Pest Control. There is an initial one-year term on these contracts, which begins December 20th, with four optional one-year extensions. These contracts are used countywide. The board has requested to approve the following contract amendment for RFP 201-726, Printing and Mailing of Election Materials. It's recommended approval of an amendment number five to exercise the optional extension period from January 6, 2024, through January 5, 2025, with Runback Election Services. There is one additional option extension, optional extension remaining. This contract is used by the Recorder's Office and the Elections Department. The board has requested to approve the following change orders per Pinell County Procurement Code Section PC 1-502, governing change orders that exceed minimum thresholds. PO number 249-750 for, with Empire Southwest, the change amount of $125,000 for a new total of $250,000. The item is for outside services, and this is used by the Fleet Services Department. The board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made between dollars amounts $100,000 and $250,000 with PO number 250-944, Suppliers ADP. The amount of purchase was $161,196. It's for ADP time and attendance services. Our IT department will be using this purchase order. PO number 250-971 with Santan Ford in the amount of $160,419.06. The items are two 2024 F-150 Super Crew 4x4 trucks. The department's using these is the Sheriff's Office and our Fleet Services Department. PO number 250-976, also with Santan Ford, in the amount of $108,365 for 2023 F-250 Super Crew 4x4. The department's using this is the Sheriff's Office and our Fleet Services Department. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Angie. On the RFP 201-726 to Runback, is this an exclusive agreement or can we, how does that work?
So the RFP was directly with Runback. This RFP, we're asking to extend the agreement. As Recorder Lewis stated, we also will have another RFP opening for additional printing and mailing for elections.
Okay, thank you.
If nothing else, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
Thank you.
Onto the consent agenda items, all will be handled with a single vote unless someone wants to pull something. We have item number F being pulled by Supervisor Miller. Would anyone else like to pull anything, including the public?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item J.
J as in?
J as in like Jeff, you know?
Yes. Anyone else? Okay, can we have a motion on the other items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, A through AE minus F and J.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. Onto item number F, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This I-
This item is an appointment to the Audit Committee. I'm appointing Brenda Hassler to this Audit Committee, and I want to thank her. You want to stand up? Thank you. So we have, so everybody knows, we really do appreciate the people that volunteer for these commissions and these activities. Everybody's got busy schedules and for them to take the time to sit on these, these boards and commissions or committees that we form, I really thank you for your time. Have you served before on this? Yes, she did, didn't she? And she came back and she wanted to do it again, so we ought to really thank her for that. So Brenda, thank you very much. Did we have her certificate? And I think I saw her sign, did she sign her?
No, those were previous minutes from the Audit Committee meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, those were, okay. Well, anyway, do we want to present it to her?
Yes, after we take the vote.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Brenda Hassler to the Audit Committee.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's on.
Again.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead. Item number F, Mr. McClure.
How about J? That'll work. So this is, this is a crazy one. This is about Federal Communications Commission and filing a petition with them to request a modification of their market. This is something that a couple of gentlemen have been working on for something like 14 years and was brought to my attention when I came into office. Michael Wiesner from Oracle, Ed Erman from Saddle Brook Ranch, they've been working on this forever, trying to get satellite television in Pinal County that is not just from the Phoenix area. And they have tried and tried and couldn't get anywhere. So staff and I started looking at this about a year and a half ago and we did quite a few things. We, we had to put a map, we had to lay out a map of the area. We've talked with attorneys from Dish Cable, who said, oh, we've done that in New Mexico, we've done that in Georgia. Oh, by the way, here's the letters you need to write. How convenient was that? And so we wrote the letters, or sent the letters off. I would like to thank Ian Dorany for his work on this. I, did I mess, no, I didn't. I appreciate the work you've done in this process. Sent the letters out. We have, we sent a survey out last summer to about 14,000 homes to see if they would prefer to be in the Tucson market or the Phoenix market. It's all the southeastern quadrant of the county, really. You know, where they shop, what they do, what TV shows they'd like to see, what, what weather forecasts they'd like to have, what emergency communication they'd like to have outside of our very wonderful PENZ group. Courtney and Corey, that's for you, by the way, that was a shout out for you. So we've done all this stuff and now we're down to filing the petition. Oh, we had the Nielsen TV people come in and say, okay, here's the viewership at this time and, you know, these times of day and who's watching what. So now we're pushing to the FCC to see if they'll allow modification to the markets. So I just want to say thank you very much for all your work. And with that, that's it.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve item J.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it?
Good job, Jeff.
Okay. So we gave some other folks the benefit of the doubt that have been waiting. We're going to take a break at 12:30, but if we could get item number 15 done, that would relieve a lot of the people that have been waiting, then we can come back and do library health and flood. So let's do item number 15. Valerie Luhon, Public Hearing Discussion Approval or Disapproval of an Ordnance for a New Restaurant.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, County Staff, and Members of the Audience. My name is Val Luhon with the Planning Division. I'm here to present on PZ 01523, which is the Gold Canyon Dairy Queen Rezone Request. Going to go over some brief details of the, of the case. So it is a request from Fitzgibbon's Law as the agent and applicant. They're seeking approval of a rezone to allow for the construction and operation of a drive-through restaurant establishment as a Dairy Queen. So the rezone is going from the Transitional Zone to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. We've got the parcel number for you there. Its acreage is just about under half an acre. Location, so it's located east of East US Highway 60 and north of South Kings Ranch Road in an unincorporated portion of Gold Canyon. The owner is Q3 Gold Canyon Land Co. LLC. And as I've stated before, the applicant and agent is Fitzgibbon's Law, Nick Cook, who is here in person. Shall any questions be required of him? Providing you the location of the rezone in the context of the broader county. Some zoning context, so it's the Fuller map that's provided by our GIS team, also zoomed in for you, just so you can see a bit, a bit of it more close, close up. This is the area map provided by our GIS team. And then some aerials, just to kind of zoom in on what that looks like. The subject site is located in that yellow oval. Some directional, so we're looking onto the site, looking west on that bottom picture, looking south, looking north, and then also showing you another perspective, looking south at the intersection. And just so the board is aware, we did meet all of our notice of hearing requirements. This shows the large broadcast sign that has since been updated from P&amp;Z onto the date required for BOS. This shows the extent of our outreach for the notice of hearing purposes, a 600-foot Providing you a development plan of what the intentions are for this project, provided by the applicant. And then also wanting to recap what occurred at P&amp;Z. So staff, we did receive one opposition and one communication of support. The communication of support wasn't too detailed, it just said that they would like to see this kind of go through. We also received an opposition that conveyed that Dairy Queen would negatively impact small businesses and the constituent requested that we consider the exact use. We did, staff's perspective is that the rezones are reviewed for the overall use. So for example, as a restaurant, we wouldn't specifically look further at the business type at the operational level unless we'd be able to identify something that would, I guess, more and more of an adverse impact. Also, that may cause a potential to be seen as a misuse of county authority to make a recommendation per a specific company.
So there are two types of Dairy Queens. Will this one have food?
This one does not have hot foods. It's going to be, I believe, like a Sweet Tree type of dessert only. Two stipulations were added by staff at the P&amp;Z, and that is just because at the time of packaging, there were two general engineering comments, stipulations that weren't provided at the time of the novice upload. And so those were accepted by P&amp;Z totaling 11 stipulations, which is what is provided in the ordinance given to the BOS. There was some discussion raised by the commission, so they were concerned for the additional use type that abuts the Dairy Queen. They had some questions regarding parking and access, just based, let me go back to the, sorry, development plan. There we go. So we can see there's Dairy Queen just up top and then below there will be another secondary, secondary use. So again, that would need to conform to the rezone that will occur at C1 zoning. As far as the parking and access, they do have their main access point coming off of the 60 into the abutting commercial property. Any type of additional access concerns, there are abutting commercial properties as well. In speaking with the applicant, there would be possibly some need or deeper conversations for cross-access agreements, which would be taken care of at the site plan review level. The applicant is aware of that, that we would need two points of ingress and egress. And again, those conversations are being furthered and we would need to see those within contracts at the SPR level. As far as parking, they do have sufficient parking for the square footage as required by code. Also, in speaking with the applicant, there could be potential for some sorts of agreements to the abutting commercial suites that allow them to have additional parking through their So items of consideration, so the applicant has submitted all necessary documentation required of the rezone process. I know at the time of providing the BOS the full packet, there was a memo regarding the affidavit of publication. The applicant has since provided that formal affidavit that is notarized that shows that it was published in the circulating newspaper by that legal deadline, and that will be provided in the full filing packet. So staff did perform outreach to county divisions. Other divisions didn't identify any type of adverse impacts that would prevent this case from moving forward for a rezone. In addition to that, preliminary TIS and drainage reports have been provided. Stipulations are provided within the ordinance that further, furthers that requirement at the SPR level. As far as the comprehensive plan, we do find that it is consistent. No minor or major amendment is necessary within the moderate, moderate to low designation. There is a flexibility provision for alternative land uses to be a bit more flexible to allow things like this to come through. There's one criterion that is a bit twofold. One of them is that, yes, commercial would be allowed as long as it's less than the 25 acres, so we do meet that with it being less than half of an acre. And then also for consideration of context compatibility. So again, seeing that this, this commercial would meet the immediate surrounding uses are all commercial, so again, office suites, we have that Future Maverick gas station going in, there's a Walgreens, and then some larger commercial-sized complexes as well. It is also located off of Interstate Highway, again, optimal location for commercial use. The rezone proposed by the applicant is appropriate for their use. It is permitted within that zoning district of C1 Neighborhood Commercial. And then the intent, as articulated within our code, it meets that zoning district, so limited commercial uses close to residential to meet a localized need, as you've seen in some of the other visuals provided to you. Surrounding residences include multiple residence districts and also single residence And then with that, staff does recommend approval with the 11 stipulations provided in the ordinance given to BOS. And I'll take any questions.
Does, is there a presentation or did you do it all for them?
This pretty much covers everything. If needed, the applicant-
I mean, there's no one, an applicant here, do they want to?
They didn't have the desire to unless absolutely needed, yeah.
All right. Are there any questions? Okay, I believe this is a public hearing, so would anyone like to speak on this item? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon and consumer of ice cream in Gold Canyon. And, Mr. Chairman, I support rezoning because it is additional competition to provide more amenities that we in Gold Canyon are constantly saying we would like to have. So I hope and encourage that the board approves this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I wish it did have, they have some pretty good food when they do choose to do that.
Mr. Chair, I move on Mr. Ravelis's, you know, commendation there that we approve item 15 as presented with the 11 stipulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. So we are going to take our recess and we'll be back and we will do, that's it, right?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A and B as presented.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. We'll go from flood control to the library district. And is there a motion on that agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A and B on the Pinal County Library District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. We'll convene into Public Health Services. Is there a motion on that consent agenda?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A through E as presented.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries as well. Excellent motions, Mike. Going to convene back into the regular meeting. And we've already done 14, 15, 16. We're up to 17, correct? Future agenda items, or did I skip one?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah. Are there any? We won't be back till next year, right? This is the, what will be the first meeting in next year?
The first meeting for 2024 will be January the 3rd.
The 3rd.
3rd. And that'll be chaired by our own Mike Goodman.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to see, you know, there was a, when it came to the, our septic fees, there was a comment made by one of the, one of the women that was speaking about the funds that an individual didn't have to be able to put in a proper septic system. Could we see if there's some, some funds are available, either through the HUD funds or something of that nature that can assist and help out with that? And I, you know, just something along those lines. When somebody comes up and they've got those kinds of situations like that, gentlemen.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I think a citizen may have spoken with Supervisor Goodman about this, but we're putting together a plaque and dedicating the office building in Coolidge to the Korean War veterans, and I'd like to do that just as quickly as possible in January. It's dependent upon getting that plaque in the mail. So just a heads up, I'd like to have all-
What department would actually do that, Leo?
Chairman Facilities.
Anything else? Okay. I believe that does that. So we have some potential executive items. I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session.
Oh, what did you make us live?
Can I have a motion to come out of executive session? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of executive session and we're adjourned.